First item would be approval of the agenda.
I'd move to approve the agenda.
And moved in second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, first up is informational items, the twenty-four, twenty-five retiring recognition.
I'm gonna go grab the other microphone while I stand up.
So, thank you for all who have joined us tonight. Retirement is a special deal and we have some here and um I don't know if we have a couple online or not, but we need to make sure that we acknowledge and thank all of the people who are retiring. Reti- education is hard right now and to stick around as long as some of these people have, we're gonna acknowledge that all of everybody, whether they're here or not this evening. But it's a tough job. Tonight, we're honoring special education employees, instructional coaches, teachers, bus drivers, security. We have all kinds, ten people total, actually eleven, eleven, yep, eleven people that we're honoring tonight. So if we can do that when you come up, we'll have you come up. You're welcome to say something if you want. You don't have to. We'll just take your picture and thank you for your years of service. I might ask you, or Deanna might tell a story or two about you, because she probably has a story or two she could tell. So first up, or we're gonna honor Kim Bolt. Kim Bolt worked in our district office for a long time. She mainly spent her time in HR. But if you worked for us, you knew Kim Bolt, right? Everybody knew Kim Bolt. She had twenty-eight years. Yep. Next is Sandy Broussard. She had twenty-five years of service. She worked mainly as a paraprofessional at Heights.
That's far than I know of, but yeah.
Okay, um, yep, and then many people know he's here with us this evening, Mr. Doug Fassler. Why don't you come on up, Doug? Thirty-seven years. Some people, um, some people uh know you through football. Some people know you through teaching. I heard you did a great speech at the uh sports awards banquet, right? Um, and so I think-
I, I know him for his dancing skills when we went on an avid tour, we were at an avid training and he was spotlighted and featured dancing with his wife. It was, it was, it was amazing. And he, I'm sure remembers it fondly.
All right, so Selena, do you have your phone to take a picture? We'll have you come up here. I know that we're uh watching our germs and so forth. So we're gonna have you stand here right in the middle and we're gonna, Deanna's gonna hand your plaque and then we're all gonna take a nice picture with you. All right, next we're honoring Lori Green. She worked in accounts payable, our district office, um, for a long time. I think she was in the neighborhood of twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven years. Um, so I have to tell a little bit, a story about the other person, Cindy Macklemore. In between the month of December, January and February, we lost a collective hundred years of service to our district. Each one of the ladies kind of started about the same time and that historical knowledge we talk about is very difficult to replace. So um, we're gonna honor Cindy Macklemore and Lori Green as well. They're not with us this evening. And then Dr. Dean, Cindy Parrish Dean, come on up. Um, let's see, how many years is this one's in?
Twenty-four.
They're all, she's older. Twenty-four years. Um, Dr. Dean has fought a courageous battle and she's with us here tonight. I don't know, Dr. Dean, all the things you've done. I, when you got here, I gave you a big hug. I asked permission to give you a hug first because I don't know about germs, but a teacher, special education director, behavior teacher, behavior, all together. Close to forty-five years, so we just can't thank you enough. Please come forward.
I worked with him for a really long time, Joe Schnellbach. He uh was here thirty-one years. I know there was more, probably more years that he worked in uh private school in the tri-cities and he is also going to be retiring, so Joe Schnellbach.
Uh, we both can do this one. Um, I gotta walk over here because my eyes are so bad. Sue Bray, are you online tonight? It doesn't look like, normally Fred's on, but I don't see them tonight. Sue Bray is at forty-three years of service in the Prosser School District. I don't know, there's probably parents and grandparents. She probably had kids and their kids. Yep, so, well, thank you, Sue, for all your work, the work that we did through the PEA, through the Teachers Association and so forth. Her kind of partner in crime, kind of in the same building. Number two on the seniority list. Oh, remember when we opened the school and we say, who gets, been here the longest? Next year, they won't get both of the flower plants because they'll have retired. Uh, forty years for Pauline Chenier. She recently finished as an instructional coach, but before that-
She's the longest standing instructional coach in the district, probably having been uh close to twenty years. And then before that, she was kindergarten teacher. She was actually one of my daughter's kindergarten teachers and probably maybe now they're single guys. Oh, there you go. All right, there we go.
So it's kind of a legacy. People had Mrs. Bray, so thank you, Sue. Um, Carrie Wise, come on up. Um, thank you so much. Uh, all of, she makes the long trip, all the way down to the river, right? Well, but pretty doggone far, halfway down. So fourteen years of service in transportation, driving a bus. Thank you.
And we love our bus drivers because fourteen years driving a bus is probably, should be multiplied times two at least. Dog years, yeah, dog years, for sure.
And a most recent retirement, we do wanna know, uh, Mr. Kurt Vogli has retired. As of a couple days ago, he is on the list last minute. Um, he is retiring from our security department. He's younger, um, but he's retiring. He says this is his second or third or fourth career. He doesn't know which one. So um, he's retiring from Mrs., from the district as well. And so we kind of like the transportation security sometimes is those unsung heroes in the background. So thank you, Kurt.
Thank you for that. Appreciate all of our, the hard work that our retirees have done over the years and, and just wish them the best going forward. Next up is the Central Washington University Summer Field Trip. Jose, are you, can you hear us?
Yes, hello, good afternoon.
Hey, you're up.
Does anyone want to start what your plans are and what all you're doing?
Yeah, hi, so I'm the site manager with GEAR Up. Um, my name's Jose Andrade. Um, so what we're doing with GEAR Up this year is every year, they coordinate a few field trips that are aimed towards cohort students and this one will be taking place at Central Washington University. So we'll be going to Ellensburg and the goal is there's gonna be mainly junior and senior year students. And we'll just be doing a lot of strategic, strategic preparation for those school years. They'll be doing workshops and just overall getting an experience of what it is to stay at the campus. It gives them a little idea if that's the campus they would like to be attending once they get to the college, um, college freshman year. And uh, yes, so they just kinda wanna get approval towards that.
So Jose, I'll kind of share it with the board. Um, this is a GEAR Up activity. It's more for information. Since it's a GEAR Up activity, it doesn't necessarily need approval, but we always like to let you know where our students are going.
Any questions for Jose? Jose, thank you for coming tonight. Um, good luck with that field trip. Sounds, sounds pretty good.
Thank you, appreciate it and thank you for having me.
Um, okay, next up is the twenty, twenty-five district office summer hours.
Just a publication for the community to let you know that we're committed to being there, um, what our holidays are, things like that. Um, it's just informational so that it's for the record.
Is that in the packet?
Yep.
I didn't see it. Oh, but it's not in the, you have to click on the link. I see, okay. Great, thank you. Um, next-
So base, I guess I should say it. So it's basically um Monday through Friday, eight to four.
Great, thank you. Uh, next up is the twenty-four, twenty-five audit report.
All I'm gonna say is yippie. Um, we, I'm gonna have Delise explain, um, but I think everybody needs to understand this is a big deal. One of the biggest audits we've had in a very long time. And so I'm gonna let her explain. The audit report is there. It's a public records document. You can get it from the Washington State Auditor's Office. But Delise, why don't you share a little bit about the hours and hours of work and what happened?
Uh, yeah, so our audit was particularly big this year. Um, you know, we had that uh finding with the FCC. So it's, it opened up a lot more items that they can audit. So typically what happens is you're audited for a certain dollar amount and when you have a finding that increases. So to, because we technically had the finding at the beginning of the year, they increased what they were auditing. So we started in June, or in January, and we just wrapped up last week at our final exit report. Um, no findings. The FCC finding was actually dropped. Uh, and we actually got a compliment from our auditor that um our sub-fund report, which the big one that we report that shows all of our, our local money at year end, that we uh have the, the cleanest and most transparent that you've ever seen. And that they're actually using that to, for example, for other districts. And so that was pretty cool to hear. Uh, but yeah, it was, it was difficult and it took up a lot of time, um, especially since we're short-staffed, but we were able to provide everything that they needed with no findings.
Oh, there's one item in the management letter. We wanna be transparent about that. Um, we had one employee who was a teacher who um had a certificate. Um, Deanna can explain this a little bit, but had a certificate from a different district and we should have gone in and clicked a little box that said they now work in our district and we didn't do that and it strictly was an error. Um, and that's why it's not a finding, it's just a reminder to double check.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. He had the certification. He needed to teach here, but because it was a conditional, those ones that you guys approved, it was um, it was missed because he had a conditional for what he was teaching, but it wasn't for our district. Because you have to get them by district.
And he no longer works for us, so we don't have to, we're not, yeah, we're not worried about that issue again.
I think the other thing that people don't know, um, and I wanna be transparent about is, do you know that we pay a large sum of money to have the audit done? I think that's a, a real odd thing. They're gonna come and audit you and you pay for them to do the work. Um, so I, if you don't know that and you're listening tonight, that's something that I think is transparent too.
We think, any questions for Delise or Kim or? Uh, thank you. Yeah, good job and it sounds like, um, you know, your processes are however, whatever you stated, or you're doing a good job and, and you know, it showed by what you just said about the auditor using us as an example for others, so thank you. Uh, next up is twenty-five, twenty-six athletics.
So we've been talking about this for a little bit and it's been asked that, Kim, will you please make a decision? Kim, will you please make a decision? Well, it's really tough to make a decision when you don't know the amount of money that you're getting. So we have made some decisions and then I have to compliment the Prosser Coaches Association and this has just been finished this afternoon. So if you don't know about it, I'm gonna fill you in. Um, so the reason that we're, I don't wanna say dragging our feet. We don't wanna commit to something and then have to back up in the end of August when we actually approve the budget. We can officially say that our seventh and eighth grade combination teams will not be in twenty-five, twenty-six. If you don't know what that means, I'm gonna slow down and I'm gonna articulate that. That we will have seventh grade A and seventh grade B. We will have eighth grade A and eighth grade B. But we've worked really hard to never cut at middle school athletics. We want people to have the opportunity to try or experience. And so we had what was called a seventh and eighth grade combo. So if you can, I know I've got my hands up and everybody can't see, but you had two As and two Bs and then you, anybody that was struggling or just learning had never played a sport before, they went in this combo team. I want everybody to understand why that's being cut. Mainly the cost of transportation. They don't ride the same bus as the A or B team. They participate on different days and different times and that means a large amount of expense. Plus, a lot of times we don't have drivers, so we have to reschedule those games and so forth. So the main thing is the cost for transportation and then, of course, the cost of the coaches. The other part I like to talk about is this amazing agreement with about C-Squad Athletics. So if you have the opportunity to look at our collective bargaining agreement, they're called CBAs for the Prosser Coaches Association. We have a head coach and we have assistant coaches. We don't have head coach, we don't have varsity coach, JV coach and C-Squad coach. We, they're not labeled that way in our CBA. So to be able, and our CBA also says that we have to notify who's coming back for high school, not middle school, but high school athletics before, the Monday before school is out. So we got an MOU on Mon, well, last Friday to extend it from Monday till the last working day of school. That was first step. The second step was working with, what does it mean to be, need a C-Squad? So here's what I need the community understanding if you go back and listen this. We looked at, uh, we asked the WIA if we could have a volunteer official. Maybe somebody who understood the sport but wasn't a part of the official association. They told us no. Um, we do know that our C-Squad, mainly that is, well, all of the C-Squad ride the bus with their varsity team, so it's not a separate bus going somewhere. Every once in a while, there's a preseason possibly, but if we're able to support C-Squad, that will not be able to happen. So our commitment to C-Squad is this. If the team has numbers to warrant, they need to understand we will not take a separate bus to a separate location. And we had to put out a contract and I could not put up, in good faith, put out a contract which had to go out by ten AM tomorrow morning, excuse me, not knowing what the budget was. So the Coaches Association came to us and said, for the five teams that have, potentially have C-Squad Athletics, could we write an MOU about that? So one of the teams said, our two, our JV coach and our C-Squad coach, we're gonna write an MOU and we're gonna split one salary. Our MOU on the other end is that the funding allows us and there's enough students, then we will fully fund the C-Squad. But we're not putting that C-Squad full coach salary out unless we know we have the students and the money. But because of the way the CBA was written. So I have to commend the Prosser Coaches Association, much like our Teachers Association, who said, it's important to us to have that third coach, we're gonna give up our salary. Now, some of the coaches, the JV and C-Squad coach is splitting one salary. In a couple of our sports, the varsity coach, the assistant coach gave up twenty or twenty-five percent of their salary to fund the third coach. So each one of the teams did something different. Some of the teams um that have, sometimes have a third team, said, we don't wanna do that. We're just gonna wait. If you can afford, if you can budget for the C-Squad, we'll wait and we'll fill it when we know we have enough students. So each one of those programs got to choose their own. Teresa Rada, their Coaches Association President, Wendy Rodriguez, Corey Ingleson. We worked together late into the evenings and we got them all done. So the community needs to know that C-Squad Athletics, actually all athletics are so important to the community, but everybody took their part in saving us the money to be able to do that. So they all have to be commended.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Kim?
I just, I just need people to know how much money that is. That's, that's a large commitment. Um, like Darlene and Andy, that's like the two of you saying, okay, one of you is gonna take half your salary this year and give the other half to the other so we can save the job. Right? That's it. I mean, that's it. I mean, people need to really understand the hours that those coaches put in and they're doing it for half their salary.
No, it's greatly appreciated, so thank you. Uh, next up is uh public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? Blake, do we have anybody online? I think we will move through that. Students, now is your time for a report, your first report.
Don't forget to turn the microphones on.
Yeah, Samantha, you're first. No, just as long as it's green.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I would just like to say that we first started our summer practices last week for summer sports or for upcoming fall sports and so we're all enjoying that and it's going very well. As for the last day of school, we're getting closer, it's tomorrow. And so for the past few days, we've been having a backpack donation drive filled with medical supplies. Both the high school and the middle school are doing this and we're sending it to Ghana. And so it will be post-surgical supplies in backpacks. So we are doing a great job of that. There are tons of backpacks being donated.
Thank you. Any questions for Samantha? Good job. Ezery?
Um, so Sam and I both went to graduation and we thought that it went very well. It's very put together, organized. And then as some of you heard, Olivia, she um finalized at Nationals for HD, um, which means that she is top ten for individual performance, um, which is pretty impressive. I just wanted to share that.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Questions for Ezery? Thank you. All right, next up is department reports. Darlene, for the food services.
Good evening. We're finishing up with school. Tomorrow, we serve breakfast. Kids get out at eleven fifteen, eleven thirty, though we do not serve lunch. We're starting the summer uh feeding program on June sixteenth at Heights. It is open to the public. It is for children eighteen years and younger of age. We have a flyer posted on our district website and on Parent Square so that parents know. Our uh breakfast and lunch will be available from Monday through Thursdays. We're gonna take uh Fridays off because when our summer school students come in on July seventh, they will only be in the building for Monday through Thursdays. We're partnering with um Kathleen from WSU Snap. She's going to bring in a green stalk. It's actually a container that we're gonna start growing the garden in to get students uh familiar with where their produce comes from. We're gonna do cherry tomatoes, leaf lettuce. Also, we have um Margarita from the Reading Foundation in the tri-cities. She is coming to Heights on July eighth and she brings uh a large assortment of books for students to come and choose from. We will take a break with our program from June thirtieth to July fourth and start with our summer school students on the seventh. Um, I'm also working on the upcoming school menus and planning taste tests with local farmers and we will be doing the harvest of the month. I'm also working on the grant from, from the Department of Agriculture, like I got last year where I was able to buy local food items to put on our menu and working on a couple equipment grants. And also this upcoming school year, we need to cut our sugar and our sodium on our school menus and add more fruits and vegetables and whole grains and proteins. Make it available for students. I would like to also um welcome Samantha and, I'm sorry, Ezery and Olivia to join our um student advisory food team at the high school to get input on what you guys would like to see on your menus. Also, I will be attending the Washington School Nutrition Association Conference on July twenty-seventh through thirtieth. I actually have an action item in the school board waiting for your approval. You have any questions?
Questions for Darlene?
No questions. I'm just uh excited for the stuff going on. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good work. Thanks, Darlene.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Andy Howe with the Maintenance Department.
Good evening. So everything on here is just a snapshot of the last few months. I'm sure there's things I've forgotten. Start off at the height, the new high school. Uh, the irrigation program is uh reprogrammed, it installed it. Still some pains. We found out that there was some stuff I had labeled wrong. So when we thought something was running, something on the other side of the building turns on, uh, things of that nature. Uh, the big sign on the side of the gym, we had a phase two come out. They brought a seventy-foot lift. They had to tear it apart, put in some ballast, new bulbs, clean. Uh, the flagpole's up front. Uh, the cables got all wrapped up, ripped the wiring out. That's why they were putting apparently the American flag on the Washington flag pole because that was the only one that had a light and nobody said anything for like two months. Um, graduation went well, hopefully in the battlefield. As you know, a couple people that uh fainted due to the heat and uh one little old lady that got bucked out of her walker and broke seven ribs. Um, grandson was pushing her apparently a little faster than was advised, uh, but okay, I guess from there on. Uh, we have some to do as we plan to tackle it at high school. Uh, we do have some wiring issues at the stadium wiring. We're still trying to find, there's a short somewhere. We have like six zones that don't work. We've just been running it by hand. Uh, the large window in the stairway uh on the side of the gym has been broken now for like a month and a half. They're supposed to be here the seventeenth to fix it. They finally got everything in. They had to rent a big lift to tear the awnings apart from the outside, uh, but that'll be done on the seventeenth. Uh, there's a couple of islands in the parking area that look like death. Uh, that's by design. We round up the grass, took the sprinklers out. We're gonna put like a landscape fabric and rock down because they were like not big enough for a real mower and it was just a mess. Um, the other thing we're gonna try and do and we'll see how it goes. We're gonna start off with the parking lot between softball and baseball and we're gonna try and stripe it ourselves. I've never done it nor has anybody else in the maintenance shop, so we'll see how it goes and we're gonna start on a small one first. Um, from there, I'll move on to the middle school. Uh, the front doors or the entryways all done, working well, looks good. Um, the football sprinklers are in, grass seeds in, everything was raked off, bedded. Uh, they've been running for a few weeks now, graphic. There's a couple that are better. Part, it's green and it's running itself. Um, we have at Housel, uh, there's three huge trees that are over the top of the portables out back and they're big, half-dead. I wanna get captured. Uh, that's one thing and that's uh, and then I have a map of the proposed underground sprinklers for the baseball diamond. Uh, I got one, well, I didn't get a bit tonight, but I showed the first contractor the job. We have the map, we have the price list. Uh, meet another guy tomorrow and then hopefully bag- Uh, meet another guy tomorrow and then hopefully Bagley will be here uh first part of next week and we can budget allowing. I would like to get it done September-ish. That way we can get it backfilled, seeded, and hopefully water on it before this year's water gets shut off, is the plan. Uh, I'm guessing it's gonna come in probably about twelve, twelve to fifteen thousand total. It was seven thousand in parts and then uh uh labor. At Heights, we have the big reader board sign went up out front. Uh, we have one more run of wire to to pull and then it should be operational. Uh, we'd low hope to have that done in the next week or two. We've kind of been tackling it as we have time in the mornings. Um, I'm really hoping it gets taken care of and and we have uh uh no parking signs coming for for Heights as well. For along the kitchen wall, they should be ready to pick up probably by the first of next week and installed shortly after. Um, at Witstran, uh we, we had some issues with the storm drains where when they were installed, I don't know, twenty years ago or whenever it was, they did not grout the rings. And so when we were testing the firewater thing, everything soaked in, the parking lot around them collapsed. So over spring break, we had that cut out, tamped in. Um, Van Bell did it, Van Bell Excavating. They grouted the rings, tamped everything and then repaved and repainted what they cut out. And there's also at the very bottom, it says Bus Shop St. Cole. There was a spot where the buses were backing out, somebody at some point, Lord knows how many years ago. They had an old parking lot, they put like sixteen inches of dirt, packed it and paved over it. Well, the top parking lot, the top asphalt had a crack, soaked through and just mushed everything up and it was. So they punched a few holes in the bottom asphalt, re-repacked it and re-re uh asphalted it. Uh, the to-dos that I would like to get done for uh Housel. Oh, there was a a power surge, uh we, well, I think that's what it was, knocked out both the water heaters at Housel because they're computerized. Or Witstran, excuse me, yes. Anyway, we just got those back online, I think last Thursday or Friday. So we've had a little hillbilly jumper hose running from hot water line to hot water line to, so the whole building actually had hot water off of one small one. Um, the other thing I'd like to get done at Witstran, the guy that came out or one of the guys that came out was working on our boilers is also the fellow that does the inspections for the state. And he looked at our boiler room with all the stuff stacked in shelves and said, there's no way this is gonna pass next year when I go through here. Uh, we don't really have a ton of storage, so what we're looking at doing is there's a, like an awning out back of Witstran. Taking a corner and doing some kind of a, a shed, I guess. It'd be like enclosing a carport. Uh, it won't be heated, but we could keep dry, dry storage in there and it would free up a ton of space in that room. We have time because we don't get inspected until next, I think next June there. Um, here at the district office, the exterior painting's done, the power washing of the old brick on the, on the, the others done. We, we had all the exterior lights put up, uh over all the entrances, we put new lights up and then the big floodlights, we wired them all back in so they work again. Uh, the last to do I have for the district office here would be the flower beds. We tore the grass out last year. We put the curbing in, we just haven't got back to it. We wanna get some plants in there and then uh, in fact, I just thought of one I missed. Oh, no, I didn't miss it. The islands at the high school, when we do that, we're gonna get the same rock and probably have it brought over here and do the crushed basalt just with a few plants in it. I want it to be super simple, so. Any questions?
Questions, Randy?
What's, what's going on with the grass at Heights?
We have a couple of very green irrigators. We started out the season, uh last year we had an irrigation person specific, just for changing hand lines. And in trying to save a few bucks, I was trying to have my mowers do it and they weren't keeping up. Uh, so we're, we just literally put out to to put another irrigation person on it.
It's pretty close to dead, doesn't it?
I've, I've been coming in and doing it myself on the weekends.
Are they still watering those with hand lines or is it, there was never underground?
Nope.
In the new baseball field, there was never underground either?
The new bit, you mean?
I mean, the baseball.
At, at Housel?
No, at the high school.
No, no, the high school has underground.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, if, if, I mean, if we could afford it, I'd have it all done in underground. You know, I mean, I'd have the, the bid tomorrow, but that's a lot of money. Yeah, we're, so what, what we had talked about in the past is like trying to do like ten to fifteen thousand a year. Just getting the important spots done. Uh, you know, fo- football was, was last winter. Uh, this year, I, I'd like to do it before winter, but it would be baseball, probably at Housel, at Housel. And then probably like girls softball the following September until, you know, we get all the way through it. I mean, if we had, if we had a couple more guys, more days in the week, you know, we could rent trenches and do it ourselves, but we're just there to swamp, so.
And the uh practice field by the new tennis courts, I think was bad last week, but this week it looks even worse.
So I'm meeting with Game, who is the contract for filling the swell and so forth. We're walking at eight-thirty tomorrow morning. And that's still under what I call warranty work from the repair from that. So um the irrigation's on, but we didn't get good topsoil. It didn't get put in um properly. And another part of that is on each edge of the swell where they put the sod in, so they didn't put good dirt underneath. So Dustin from Game is meeting me tomorrow at eight-thirty. I should have some better information from him.
Cause like on the, the middle to the south, I mean, it was, looked pretty good last week, but and when I was out there today, I mean, you can tell it's been watered, but
Yeah.
that grass is.
Well, and even, even worse than that, if you, if you walk out to the edge of where the sod is, there's a big, yeah, you know, like.
So that's under our warranty and I, our um contingency money and, and our uh retainage, our retainage money won't be paid until that's to our specification.
Cool.
Other questions for Andy? Thank you, Andy. I, I would like to say for graduation, when you look down on the, the football field, it was green as green can be. So, you know, good job for keeping that up for, for last Saturday. So thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, next up is OSPI apportionment.
No, oh, I think they're free.
Oh, I missed one, sorry. I got a little happy with the check marks. Uh, is review of policy three-one-one-two, social emotional climate.
Uh, so policy three-one-two is a required policy in Washington State. Um, this was one that was on before and you asked me to take it to our district MTSS team, to MTSS S- S- S team. And they were all reviewed it and approved it to move forward. Um, it's, they, they felt that it meets with our goals and our beliefs around what we're trying to do with students and that multi-tiered system of support. And the goal is really around that real positive climate for students at school. And again, this discussion, so it'll be back a couple more times if you have any chance to dig into it.
Any questions for Deanna?
Thank you for raising your hand so nicely.
All right, um, there, there's a line item for equity and then there's a line item for equity focused, which I'm just curious why, if, if the equity focus line item even needs to be in there?
So if you look at the procedure, it defines equity and equity focus. And the definition for this policy of equity means that each child receives what he is to develop his or her full academic and social potential. Um, uh, equity, it refers to, my microphone's going in now. Equity focus refers to strategies aimed at improving equity and experiences and outcomes for all students and adults. So improving their outcomes so they receive, can achieve their full academic and social potential. Um, and then it, it speaks to the, 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 you know, the various protected classes, race, gender identity, ethnicity, language, disability, sexual orientation. So it's, it's a broad category. Um, so in this pers- perspective, I think equity really does address what we want to do. We're not talking about equity, the wor- uh, we, we want students to all have those positive experiences to reach their full potential. And again, it's the in draft, so we can make amendments to it as we see fit.
I, I just, yeah, I, I mean, if, my thought reading through it, if, if we, if we didn't have to have the equity focus, I mean, equity, I think, in my mind, kind of explains that all students
Okay.
should get what they need. That was my thought on that.
Can you tell me what line you're pointing to? Because when I sit here and you're talking, you're in the policy.
Correct.
Uh, which paragraph?
Uh, that would be four and five? Or five and six, I guess?
Are you in the procedure or the?
Policy's only four, four paragraphs.
Sorry, draft procedure.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, well, I just thought I, maybe I was looking at the wrong thing. Um, so you feel, you feel that if equity was there, the term and definition of equity, that would feel, you feel like that would cover what we're talking about? Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my, my thought is that, I mean, that covers equity. That's, that was my thought on that one.
Okay.
Um, on the multi-tiered system of support, um, continuum of evidence-based practices, I guess I'm curious where this evidence base comes from.
Okay, so evidence-based practices re- um refers to um, if we say we have some uh students that are struggling in math, so multi-tiered system of su- support covers academic, social, emotional. So students are, are struggling in math. And we decide to provide six weeks of an intervention for them to see if we can improve. Maybe they're struggling with um solving two-step equations, okay? And then at the end of that, we want to see that they, that they, that that actually worked. So the goal and, and the whole MTSS S, MTS, I'm getting too many S's, MTSS system is that when you provide an intervention, you look at where they are at the start. You do something you think is gonna work to help them. And at the end, you also look at data and if it worked, then great, you can move on. If it didn't work, then you need to do something else.
Yeah, but that, so that's our own in-house.
Yeah, that's us providing evidence. We, you know, tracking students' growth, whether it's their, it, it for their social, emotional. Maybe if they've taken another cell survey and we see that they maybe were having struggles with friends before, but now that's better. So it's looking at data, not just trying something and hoping it works.
I think the words research-based would mean, um, I don't go and say, we're gonna do Kim Casey's intervention. We have to find something that has research-based data behind it to use as the intervention tool. We just don't go to something off the shelf that has no, it would be like saying, I'm doing something with no um evidence behind what I'm doing. So that's what definition of research-based means.
And unfortunately, and education, that happens a lot. We try something and we sometimes either maybe we're not going back and examining if it's really working or we don't look to make sure it's something that's gonna work before we try it. We know that's not always possible if you have a novel idea or something new, but then you have to look at the evidence to see if what you tried really worked. Thanks, Blake. You saved the day again.
Then I, my last uh question is under positive school climate, uh is point seven, offer frequent opportunities for students to discuss and practice anti-racism and develop collaborative solutions to address inequities. So I'm just curious about practicing anti-racism.
So remember when we took the students to Cila to tie, to talk about the, did you go Sammy? Did Ezri did you? So we took the students and we were working about trying to abolish the word, the N-word that's used. Um, that would be an example of that. Um, it's trying to, those are examples of things that we would do to um im- um, improve anti-racism.
And it, it's our hope and our expectation that everyone is practicing anti-racism every day of their life at school. Um, students, adults and everything. It's kind of written in an odd way, I would say, a little bit. Um, so
any, any suggestions you have in that would, would be good for us, but that's what its purpose is.
It's really, yeah, I mean, that was an active activity to try to work on a problem that was, exists amongst our students. But, yeah, this may be reworded, reworded a little bit more, but it's like um having a, a school culture and expectation of anti-racism to me makes.
I just think anytime you bring up the anti-racism disc, I mean, it's basically love your neighbor.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We could just put that in there. I mean, honestly, it's like, I've, I've, a long time ago as a student, I, I know kids say dumb things, stuff they shouldn't say. I, I don't know, I just practice anti-racism, I mean, that, that's just loving your neighbor.
It's really, and it's also about educating, um, education about why, why we, why you, we want you to act in a certain way or treat people in a certain way.
Yeah.
So.
Think you can look at what happened at Pasco High School's graduation and understand why not support.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's not important, I just, I don't know about having a class on teaching anti-racism, like.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we'd have a, a class on that, but Samantha wants to say something, I think.
Yeah, so you were mentioning the event that was hosted by Cila. And although I didn't go, I did hear lots of feedback and all the feedback I heard was positive. And so it sounds like we are moving in that direction for a change and to make the, the place, the school the best place it could be.
And I think that um probably most of us know and perhaps Cila chose to make that decision because of an event that occurred on their campus. I was actually there when that happened. It was a very um disturbing situation. And so it's those kinds of situations where that education around and, and learning and understanding why that isn't appropriate and how, what that does and how that hurts people is so important.
I, I hundred percent agree. And unfortunately, this, a ton of this falls back on parenting too, because if you got knuckleheads saying that stuff in the stands and something wrong at home, but anyway. I think that's all the questions I had on that one.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just would like to add a piece, um, depending on our age and generation that are in the room. We can remember when the R-word is no longer used in our society. Right? We don't use the, the word retardation or any combination thereof in our public setting. Um, that is what we're working forward in the world, world in which we live in the twenty-first century. And so um, we're working hard with Brian, be kind, but we, those kinds of things. Um, but we just have to call it out at what it is and I think that's, that's a piece. And so um to any board member, to the students, if you look at one of those bullets and you think this is a wording that would be more appropriate for our school board or our community, not our school board, our schools and our community, we'd love to hear the ideas and suggestions on how you think that wording could be done with the same meaning.
Well, and if you look at it and you go, well, gosh, it really seems like they missed X or mixed, missed Y. These are sample policies written by an attorney that works for um the school board. It's, I mean, I know she gets input and stuff from others, but it is the reason they go before the board and for you guys to read them, the community to see them and so people can give input.
We're happy, we like input. We don't like to have to come up with it all on our own.
If, if someone does make a racial, racial comment, there is, I mean, obviously that person is been told out and talked to and uh, you know, that would be an opportunity for, just to deal with that person. I, I, I think I'm a little bit in agreement because the, you know, offering frequent opportunities for students to discuss this. I, I don't know that that's necessary. Um, but yeah, when someone actually does it, then
And that's when the majority of the education occurs. And like Kim said, yeah, sometimes there's punishment, but you have a, a student, a third grader or a fourth grader so that says something that inappropriate, a word that they shouldn't have used. Ultimately, our goal is to educate them, to educate them and help them understand why that's not okay. Sometimes they've, you know, they've seen something on TV or they draw swastika and they, they don't have any idea what that means. I, I spent many, many uh, an hour with students at, trying to educate them why something wasn't okay. And do they really understand and know the history of that? And most of the time, they don't.
Or they don't even know what the word really means.
No.
Thank you. Any other questions coming? And now we're moving on to the OSPI portion.
I mean, I'd really, if you have the document, I sure would appreciate you opening it. Um, and I'm gonna do the same just so I can, I was, kind of got into our last discussions. I gotta open that fairly for just a second. Okay, I put this in here for the public, almost more so than I did for the, the school board.
Okay, I put this in here for the public, almost more so than I did for the, the school board. There's often this discussion when we say we don't have the money. That somebody thinks, and they've read the headline, Washington State gives more money to special education, but they don't understand what it takes to fund it. Or they're saying, we want to order our supplies for the month of June. But then we say, well, we really, I mean, for the next school year in June, so we can pay them during the summer. And we don't have the money to pay for them. And people say, well, why don't you have the money? So a couple of things, I, this email. Came specifically, if you'll notice, it came from OSPI Financial Services Department. And this is came exactly to me and I wanted to put it on the public record. While it is information, um, I want people to hear it. So I'm gonna use an example in a household. If, if you have two incomes in your household, you know approximately the amount of money you're bringing each month. For those of you in the farming world, I'm from the farming world, I know we got two checks a year. One when we sold the beef and one when we sold our crops. So please understand, I'm not talking that every family is the same. But much like the farmer, we have to plan. For that money, whether the check was a good crop or a poor crop, we have to make it last for our expenses. Well, Washington State said. Well, we're sorry, school districts. We don't have enough money this month to give you all your money, so we're gonna give you less money. And by the way, we'll make it up to you in the month of July. What people don't understand, and Deleese can time it anytime. Our fiscal year begins in September. Their fiscal year, I believe, begins in July. So what they did was put off what they couldn't pay us in June until they got their new money in July. People need to understand that that is a voting. That is a legislative action. That is not something the Prosser Washington did or Prosser School District did or did not do. Um, there are so many links. If you're into this, I suggest you go to the financial section and look at the maps. And look what's going on within the state. So the other thing that I was gonna say was in your household, you say. Um, this is how much money we make this year and one twelfth of it we're gonna use in January, one twelfth we're using February. Well, the state of Washington doesn't work that way. They say, we're gonna give you five percent in May, we're gonna give you nine percent in December. They don't give us one twelfth of our money every year. You've heard us talk about having to borrow against our own money. So a few days after this email came, we got another email that said, here's some banks that will lend you money. Five banks, here's some banks that will happily lend you money. Oh, but please understand your interest is not reimbursable. So if we borrow the money, then we have to pay the interest on that money out of. Your levy dollars, our basic ed dollars to make that work. I just didn't think it was fair to not put this on the board packet for public record. I wanted people to be able to go back and listen and see the document. So I'm open for questions. It was nothing more than that. I think, um, I just think you, the people needed to hear it.
Any questions or comments for Kim?
Thank you for putting that on there. It's helpful.
You know, I, I look at this and I look at the last, um. Oh, there's a couple meetings ago, you put a percent of budget that they spend. On Washington schools and that continues to get to drop. You know, they continue to fund things that don't help basic education. And they just keep going and going and going while they, they sit there and take the money from the school districts. It is super frustrating. I know it's frustrating probably trying to manage this, but, uh, I mean, this is kind of how. You know, understanding what's going on, learning how they, they fund schools. You know, the different classes of money through the state and what, what they're playing politics with education a little bit. Right? They're pushing programs that aren't. I guess they're not, they're not, they're not focused on students. At, at the legislative level, in my opinion, if they're gonna do stuff like this. To underfund, you know, what we have to pay, you know, pay out, whether it's. Vouchers or payroll or, you know, anything else that the district has to do. So it's extremely frustrating. And I'm, I am glad that, that we put it on and we'll just keep working on it and. See what happens.
So Deleese, what kind of a potential pickle does this put, put you in or us in, I guess? If we're waiting until July to get.
Um, we, well, we're barely gonna have enough money to make payroll.
Yeah.
So right now we're in contact with utility companies. Um, to see if they can take a partial payment or wait until next month. Um, we've talked about putting stuff on the credit cards, but the issue with that is we're still accruing interest. Um, so you're, you're ending up paying more down the line. Um, so right now our focus is making sure that our employees are, are getting paid. Um, and we're keeping the lights.
So I want everybody to hear, when we say making payroll, I want everybody to hear me, your check is not going to pass. Okay? But what does it mean? It means, um, for many of you, you can relate to this in some way. In December, you bought too many Christmas presents. And you need to pay for them. And so in January, you didn't pay your Cascade Natural Gas bill. Right? So do you hear me loud and clear? You're gonna get your paycheck. But how we go about doing that is a very upsetting, sad, controversial issue. Our local vendor, I mean, they wait for our check. Deanna and I were talking about this the other day. We're the largest employer in our city. What does that do to the system if we no longer can make and pay?
And I guess, I, Kim was trying to give an analogy to explain, but the reality of the situation is not that we, we bought too many Christmas presents in December. Um, we can't afford any Christmas presents right now. No Christmas this year. Um, but. When they hold back several hundred thousand dollars. What are we supposed to do? And with no warning at the end of May, like.
No warning.
No warning. Now, we have warning for June, but that doesn't solve the problem.
Our funding for LEA, so we get four payments a year, local effort assistance. It's to supplement our levy tax dollars. It was cut in the month of May and they did not tell us. Usually we get five, six hundred thousand and you can go back and see previous years when we got two hundred thousand in the month of May. Um, that's huge.
And no, everybody needs to hear it. No warning. That's like your automatic deposit came in, you thought your check was supposed to be, and it was half as much as what you're supposed to.
We didn't find out until they sent us that.
Yeah, we're gonna, same thing's gonna happen this month. Now we don't.
I'm gonna, I mean, I've never seen anything like this in all of my years. And the reality is districts are already struggling. And if the state doesn't do something. Like they're talking about schools being in binding conditions, everybody's, the state's practically in binding conditions right now, but they're supposed to oversee. School districts that are in binding conditions? Come on. That, like, the whole thing is, uh, is ridiculous. It's making people, it's, it's, it's taking from. Where it should be, you know, the place this money should be spent. They're doing, they're doing smoke and mirrors. To save money this year is basically what they're doing, because if they defer and then they don't pay it out. They've, you know, act until you get into July. Oh, look, they saved however many million or billion dollars. But it's all fake. It's, it's not real. And then the impact comes in with people, with individuals. Like Kim said, yeah, we'll make payroll. But if we, you know, we have a lot of local vendors. We have to be able to pay people. We were like fully prepared. To get our orders done, get things in, ready to go for school. Our staff, our secretaries did piles of work getting all their teach orders in, all on hold right now. Can't do any of it.
I, I think another good example, um, about the binding conditions and just kind of the conundrum the state puts us in is. They recently came out and said that you can borrow against your TBF. If you're in binding conditions. So the state is controlling what you're doing and then you can borrow from a fund that you have a balance in. Um, so we're really just stuck in between a rock and a.
Yeah, they said that, but then in Chris Richtel's webinar, or webinar yesterday, he said, but if you're, if you're doing that, that's a problem because you already don't have money, so you shouldn't be borrowing against funds. It's, it's, districts are doing everything they can to get by because of what the state is doing to us.
So is there anything I? Throw, I, I don't know, um, obviously dealing with the state and OSPI is kind of a losing battle, but I mean, is there any? Talk amongst you guys, districts in the state about just, i- i- it's gonna take numbers to get any movement over there, like districts. Taking a stand together rather than. One or two here or there. I mean, what?
I. Don't touch it. Uh, because. I mean, voices, uh, the reality is no matter what the voices are, they aren't gonna, it isn't gonna make any more money. Up here. And, um, but that is the, the reality and the truth. Um, we, Kim just finished handing out some reduction letters for our classified staff. And in the end, we, we had to make some harder decisions and. Cut it deeper because I have zero confidence in my grant funding. I don't know what it is right now. I've always known by now. I've always had my amounts to budget and plan. I have nothing. It's June. And we have to pay people out of money we don't even know if we're gonna get.
I think the other part is, last year, if you remember, we were doing budget work in May. And we were able to approve our budget in July and we had all kinds of spread. We can't even start that work. Because we have no idea. And at, right now, they haven't talked about giving us an extension. Right? We normally have to have it approved, the law says, by August thirty first. That's not even our policy. That's a. And I don't, we don't even know how we can start. We don't know what our revenue forecast is. How do you know what to? And so I don't, I'm not a Debbie Downer. Many of you know that. I am not a Debbie Downer, but. I can't do a budget on, when I have no idea what my income is. And I don't mean mine, the Prosser School District's income is. So.
Is there anything we can do with, uh, unfunded mandates? That would help us out?
Well, I'm gonna be very transparent, Rick. I'm gonna tell you what I told you yesterday or the day before. We are, we had to have an inspection on some of our, our facilities. I'm gonna leave the department out of it, but we had to have a, some inspections done. And they said, you need to fix X. And in the meeting. Whole bunch of people, but we've let everybody go, so we don't know who's gonna come back and check and see if you fixed it. That's what they said to us. Well, I mean, I'm not gonna do something that's not safe for our students. Everybody hear me loud and clear. We're not, not. But you can't make us do something if. If you don't give us the money to do it or have a way to follow to see if we did. I mean, Dan and I are filling surveys like.
OSBI, if they're spending money on anything right now, it's making surveys and things they want me to answer. Because I've never seen so many ever, ever. In the last two weeks, I've probably gotten eight and at least half of them are ones I've never seen before. And it's, it's bizarre. And I don't know if anybody's reading them and they're coming from people working for us by OSPI. Most of them, I don't recognize their names. For many, many years, you knew exactly who you were talking to at OSPI a- all the time. And everything's changed so much. We have reports like our, uh, uh, our district improvement plan basically do. That we're, we're supposed to turn these things in, our school improvement plans. We don't.
A generic email, it doesn't even have a name on it.
They don't even know if anybody's gonna read them.
Hey, Kevin was with us.
So are we spending time on things that we're not sure if, I mean, but we're, I'm a rule follower. And I've been doing this job for a long time and there's things that I do every year that need to be done and. Um, improvement plans are important because we do hold people, I mean, we have standards, but the reality is. There are these hoops that we're jumping through sometimes and I don't know what they're for. And I probably am. I'm always the glass half-full person, but this is really, this is the, it's really frustrating. It's really, really hard to lead through this kind of, it's chaos.
And, and they told us in the meeting yesterday, they lined off sixty-eight people at OSPI last week. Is it sixty-eight, right? Oh, over sixty. And so now the emails don't say Kim Casey at OSPI, right? They say, like, no, they say, like, like the department name. Department is a generic, because they don't know who's gonna get the email to do the checking.
Sounds like a trainer.
So. I, and I just want everybody to know, that's for the public record. So somebody comes back six months from now or two years from now, that this discussion was open and on the record.
Well, I appreciate that. Uh, any other further questions?
Thank you, guys, for your hard work.
Uh, next up, Rick, you're up, CTE four-year plan. Thank you for being patient.
Talking about OSPI and things you have to do.
He's doing one of them.
That's what this is. This is an OSPI requirement, uh, to have the four-year plan. Uh, approved by the board, the general advisory committee, and it's a compilation of all the other advisory committees. And so the advisory committees have four-year plans that they re- they review with the teachers and then they approve. And that plan goes on to the general advisory, onto the district four-year plan. Which the, the general advisory committee approves and then it comes to, to you guys for review and approval. And so then it goes into my end-of-year report. Uh, what a great segue. It goes into my end-of-year report, which is comprised of the program evaluations for all of the different CTE programs. Some PD explanations and a couple of other things that I have to have submitted by generally September thirtieth. Mine just got approved from last year, like three weeks ago.
I need everybody to hear that. Last year's plan that we did all year was approved three weeks ago because they don't have the people to approve the plans. But we have a deadline to get this one approved now.
Yes. Yeah, so. Yeah, and so there's, there's really not a whole lot of changes in this year's four-year plan. Already talked about some of the new courses that we've offered that you approved. There's one, like I've talked before, that this plan is a, a work in progress. Well, through our scheduling, um, process this year, we determined that we had a need for a, a yearbook instructor. So CTE Jennifer McMurtry agreed to take that on. Well, that was after we had the approval of the GAC, so it's not in this year's four-year plan, even though it's going to be happening next year. But it'll be reflected in next year's four-year plan. So it's, once again, it's just a plan. It's kind of a guidepost, guide light that, that we follow and. Change it as we go. Any, any questions? I know you guys got a copy of it.
Questions for Ray? No, I think, you know, you, the CTE program does a pretty, really good job in offering a ton of different opportunities for students and keeps growing and. Uh, so I appreciate your work and everybody else that's involved with it, so.
Yeah, and with some restructuring too and staffing this year, we, we did take, we had to restructure, uh, business and management and their business and marketing. And we took a look at which were the high priority classes of students and we made sure that we had those offered. So we weren't taking away the, the, you know, really popular classes and students were. And then I also want to say we have great advisory committees. All the advisory committees are very good, great input, great ideas. Really, really good to work with and, and they've grown over the years and I really appreciate their, their time and effort. I think you guys are, uh, yeah, you guys, you guys do a, do an awesome job. I was interested, let, let me know if you do the, uh, global gap unit, because I could probably use some help with that.
The what, what unit?
Global gap. Oh. Brag, yeah, they're, they're working on it. All right. I might be a student. Okay. But thank you for, uh, yeah, thank you guys for everything you're doing for the school. It's awesome. Thank you.
Well, I would make a motion on faith that the CTE four-year plans.
Hey, our end's a good prank.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to approve the CTE four-year plan, student? All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, Ray.
All right, thank you. Great, thanks, Ray.
Uh, next up is the Washington School Nutrition Conference. Darlene, you're back up, back at the table.
So in my letter, I've asked for approval to go to the Washington School Nutrition Conference. It's held. In Spokane on July twenty-seventh to the thirtieth. Uh, this year, the theme is the magic of school nutrition. We go there and we have, um. Breakout classes where we learn. Everything to do with child nutrition, the new guidelines that are coming up, where we have to reduce our sugar, reduce our sodium. Add more fruits and vegetables and proteins to students' meals during the day. You have any questions for me?
Questions regarding. I'm moved to approve the. I guess it'd be out-of-state travel for the Washington School Nutrition Conference.
I'll second it.
Thank you. When I return, I will come back and do a report on what I learned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, so it's been moved and seconded to approve. Students, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, darling. Uh, out-of-state travel request for migrant education program recruiter invitational. Mr. Kev.
Uh, so I've been meeting with Eric, uh, through May, actually early part of April. This is already planned going forward. It's, it's happening in September. This is when the team, um, Selena and Lisa, uh, Deanna also is part of that. Will end up going to this conference to learn more about, um, similar breakout sessions that they'll go to to. Um, either collaborate with colleagues to learn more or to learn something new to bring back. Around the migrant. Program.
Questions for Kevin?
We know that spending guaranteed. We're not sure. Are we not sure?
I don't know if you saw me whisper to Deanna's shoulder. This migrant will be funded. For this portion, and there is some carryover that would need to be spent regardless. And so the word. I hate to use word, I'm ninety-nine percent certain, because something could come up, but ninety-nine percent certain this is fully funded.
Yeah, and I, there is money in there currently.
Yeah.
Um, and I have seen that. Am I up to speed on all of the things coming next year and the year after? No. I can't answer those, but I, I do know that there's funding in there, and this has been pre-planned. Another thing that's gonna be happening is PD with Thinking Maps this next month. Um, because that money is already there. Um, that's questions that we have going forward, though, uh, carryover wise going into next year and then the year after, who knows? We don't know if they're gonna allow carryover or if there's even gonna be funding. And after listening to the meeting this last week, I, I don't, I think I was more confused after the meeting this Monday. About the funding.
Typically carryover to migrant.
Uh, different programs are allowed different amounts of carryover.
But migrants, a hundred percent carryover. Yeah. And they're, they're, they're the most flush with cash.
Yes, there is.
There's a substantial amount of money there.
If we got it, KG.
I'd move to approve the out-of-state travel request for migrant education program. Recruiter invitation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve out-of-state travel for the migrant education program recruiter invitational, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So I just, I've just been meeting with the PAC board next door, and there's several rumors out there, and I let them know the rumors that are out there. So that they're prepared. Um, and start thinking about that over the next year, but carryover. We, we don't know, so I was sharing with them that if it goes this way, we're gonna have to prepare to spend. Otherwise, you lose it. If they're allowing some carryover, then we'll have to be a little bit more strategic to, to be able to maybe fund something in the following year. But we just don't know yet.
Great, thank you.
And hopefully it won't be a mystery like everything else right now.
Great, thank you, Kevin. Uh, next up is Seattle University College of Education, College of Education internship placement affiliation agreement.
Well, this comment on the last one, though, the first time we have Kevin Gilman listed on the agenda as the Director of Grants Assessment in Elementary Programs. There we go. Uh, he's off to one of those programs. Uh, this is a, a placement agreement. We have a request to replace a Seattle University agreement. Um, for their College of Education, student teacher, and, um, we don't have an active agreement, so we need one in place so that they can, they can have their internship here. Yeah, this one's more generic, so, uh, student teaching, counseling, it probably could be a variety, but this is for a student teacher.
Just a quick question. Let's see, we get a lot of these. Do you have a, a rough guesstimate on how many of these type of agreements we have within the school district?
Right now, we probably, that are, we have active agreements, but no student placements. Um, all the low, all the closest colleges, Eastern WSU, um, Central, a lot of the private colleges. We have Whitworth, we have some colleges, I can't even tell the name of them, that. We just did the one for Abby, and I can't even remember them. Abby Rodriguez, I don't remember the name of it. We probably have right now between fifty and twenty. Um, we had about. Twenty-five interns of various kinds, whether they were student teaching, doing practicum hours before student teaching, counseling. Um, social work, um, this, you know. This year, we'll have school psychology. Um, we already have a bunch of student teaching placements. We have, uh. We had, have had Janney, so we've had, uh, Arizona State. Um, yeah, we, we have a lot, yeah. And every time it's, and they're usually only good for about two years, and we have to do it again.
Great, thank you.
I'd make the motion to approve Seattle University College of Education internship placement affiliation.
Second that. So it's been moved and approved to. Into Seattle University College Education internship, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is Resolution ten twenty-five surplus sale.
Well, I'm very happy to say that it's a pretty short list. Um, if you remember right, when I started two years ago, we did these huge, huge things, and now we should be having a list similar to this each year. Either for old, broken, um, outdated, right? So this is a manageable list, so you've got it there in front of you. Some things get recycled, some things will get sold.
Any questions on the surplus sale?
I'd move to, uh, Resolution ten surplus sale. Second.
It's been moved and approved to. Moved and seconded to approve this Resolution ten twenty-five, uh, surplus sale, students? This is a roll call, though. Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I too will vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is vouchers and payroll. Did have one question. I know we, we seen ASB, and I can't remember, do we typically see? The general fund vouchers come in? Next week, or next meeting?
There's no general fund because we did not have the money to do a mid-month run this month. The only thing we're paying is utilities. So we're still working on those phone calls, and as soon as we have answers from all of them. Abigail will do, um, what we call an X cycle, mid-month random, um, run in the, the month, and those will get paid the next day. Then those will be on the next quarter.
And that's the policy that's in place so that I can sign those unto a certain dollar with you, so we can pay them. We're trying to work with our utility.
It's kind of what I suspected, but I wanted to say it out.
Yeah, it was a little bit weird when there's no general fund there, yeah. But we did, uh, finally were able to cut the check for the electric bus, so that's what the TVF checks for, so that's done and.
Great, thank you. Any questions on voucher?
Is that bus running again?
Oh, it's great, yeah. It's up and running. Oh, yeah, it was, you were behind it. It's great.
I'm moved to approve vouchers of payroll. It's been moved and seconded, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, moving on to consent items one through four. Any question?
I'll second it.
It has been seconded to approve the consent items one through four, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes, uh, all the action items for tonight. Moving on to reports, Delise.
Okay, so I have a couple. Um, I have March financials and May enrollment. Um, so to begin with March financials, and, you know, I, I am a little bit behind on our, uh, my financial reporting. Um, as you know, we've been super short-staffed, so I plan on having April as the next board meeting, and then we'll be back on track for July. Um, so we have March's financials. Um, you know, we dug in about a half million dollars into our fund balance to cover. Um, expenses, however, you know, we are operating right now at a three point nine one percent fund balance, but this time last year, we were operating at two point six eight. So not as great as five point five seven as twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, but we're still on the upward trend of hopefully getting back to that four point five, uh, middle ground that, that board policy states.
Looking at, uh, just a. It's not considering what we just talked about with OSPI, but, um, do you, what do you project us? In August, is there any fund balance, or can you give me a guesstimate, or give us a guesstimate?
Um, I think it's gonna be right around the seven hundred thousand that we budgeted for. Uh, you know, we really tried to cut expenses and, and we have, but even doing the fund projections, we're gonna come out right, right at the four. Forty-seven, forty-five. Um, hopefully a little bit under. Uh, right now, we can spend. Our average is, uh, four million a month for the next three months. Um, we did three point eight in April, and then about three point eight, three point nine, and, or three point eight in April and three point nine in, in May. Um, and so if we can keep our expenses under that, we'll be, we'll be fine. Um, you, you can see what, just looking at the, the graphs from last year to this year, our monthly expenses are going up. There was one month last year that we had over four million dollars. Everything was under four. And if you look this year, we've had three months under four. Um, so expenses are, are high, but we're doing everything we can to make it that.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Questions on enrollment, or I guess you didn't get to enroll?
I did, that's okay. Um, so for, for May, we are down. Um, we did, we did lose, uh, twelve FTE. I will say, though, I just checked on June, um, and we only lost two. So we'll end up at, for three, so we'll end up. At. Two, three, three, two for the month of June. So we lost three in the month of June. So we'll get paid at the two thousand three hundred and thirty-two enrollment. For the rest of the summer. So we're still above what we budgeted for, um, but this, this trend really goes back to what we're budgeting for next year, which is. Two, two, seven, one, which is on the conservative side. And as you can see with the downward trend, that's, that's what we're going, that's what we're going to, and probably will be at the end of next year.
Questions for Delise? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Deanna?
Thank you.
Uh, so just one fun, I have several things, but the first thing is a little fun thing. My sister is here from Boise. Last year she came and she, they, she brought her pickleball equipment. And wanted to know where she could play pickleball, and I'm like. I do not know because there's no pickleball courts, but she's gonna go play tonight on our pickleball courts. Um, testing is done, celebration on that, um, which is good because school's gonna be out. Um, I met today with the Boys and Girls Club and our, some of our farm to school people. Uh, if you go out by the Boys and Girls Club, by the old big greenhouse. There's an area there that looks not really great, and it's in the fenced, that little short fence that the Boys and Girls. Uh, they were gonna take a, a, probably about a third of that, we're working with them, they're gonna put their garden there. And, um, I'm gonna work with, we'll work with, um, the E-CAP program, the ESD. Boys and Girls Club got a grant to replace that really short fencing with normal-sized fencing, because that will eventually be playground too, if we're able to develop. That into preschool classrooms. So it, I mean, right now, they are trying to keep stuff in the greenhouse. The greenhouses don't cool. They have to take everything out. It'll. Like, die, especially the last couple days, it's been way too hot, so, and they're gonna put a, put it in our greenhouse. They're gonna work with Andy, so that we get the irrigation in there properly. And take care of all, all of that, but right now, it's like, the part that they're gonna do, and half of it is just, it's not even getting any water, so it looks terrible. So I said. I think it's a fantastic idea, so we're working on that, so that's to come. Um, the six through twelve, uh, science adoption, we, we're continuing to try. Um, I do believe the high school has found, um, a curriculum, McGraw-Hill, that they like. Um, we're gonna continue to work through the, on, during the summer to try to make a decision, so at least the high school can move forward, even if the middle school's not able to yet. Um, we are, I met with, um, a member of the PTO. They, uh, did the arrangements for Science on Wheels to the Pacific Science Center for us last year for our elementaries. I'm taking that on this year. Because there was a lot between scheduling and trying to figure everything out. It's, it's kind of hard to have a middleman. Um. Although I guess that's kind of me now, so, um, the, uh, elementaries will have in November, the second week of November, Science on Wheels. Then we're gonna do the engineering series this year. Um, it'll be at Heights the first two days, and then KRV for two days, and the, on that Friday, the. Third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh of November. So when we get closer to that, I'll give you guys a heads up, so if you have a chance to go, and they do that stuff all day long. It's all day long, two days in the bigger schools, and they just need the one day in which, right? Um, and then, as you said, um, Olivia is, uh, representing as well, but both kids are representing as well, as always at NHD. But I looked, I was looking while we were here, because I text, Dean had been texting me about telling me how she did, but don't tell anybody yet, and all these things, like, oh, okay. Um, but she's a top ten, there's eighty in just her category, almost eighty kids. So ten, top ten in the nation, so I text him today, do, I knew if something happened, he would have texted me, but he said that, uh, it's all announced in their award ceremony tomorrow. So they won't know tomorrow, you know, uh, what her final placement is, so that's really exciting. We have sent kids to NHD. National, to nationals, I would say at least. Fifteen years and maybe longer, and, um, at first it was a surprise. It's not a surprise anymore when we go. But we have never placed in top ten. Um, there's so many great projects there, but it's, so it's very exciting.
Questions for Deanna? Let's see, Anna, Jim?
Okay, um, let's see, the property, there's really no update on the properties. Um, I want everybody to know, the last Wednesday's paper had the correction on the parcel B in the paper. It'll, it, well. And it goes tonight, I guess tonight's the second week. So the next board meeting will be the addendum amendment to the resolution, so the parcel B is clear. We have lots of interest in the property, but we can't move forward on that until then. Not a lot, we've had lots of showings on the Grant Avenue property. We feel that we haven't received offers or anything on that yet because it's a unique piece of property, and. Whoever's going to do that is going to have to work through a permit process, and I think there's a lot of investigation on they have to do to see if they can make that work for them. Budget, um, I, I think I have, I have a good news and a bad news. So good news, um, we can begin our work on budget. On our staffing side, because our contracts are negotiated, people have made sacrifices. I'm getting ready to send out a year-end budget, um, update for the whole staff, obviously, as board members, you'll get it also. But we have to acknowledge the sacrifices have been made. Um, that's from our teachers, that's from our Principals Association, Deanna, myself, what you heard about the coaches today. Um. Prosser has a lot to be proud of. There are not a lot of unions throughout our state or employees that say, we're gonna put kids first. And we still have to pay our rent and our house payment, but we're gonna take a sacrifice to, for the better good. Uh, Brian, it goes back to your word of being kind. I think this is an example of the kindness. Um, so I want to make sure we say thank you. Um, there are still so bad news. Um, if you're reading the newspaper, I'm going to sound like a teacher here for a minute. Remember the, the source. But. Regardless of your political beliefs and your political system and your take on those things. The reality is, the federal government budgets are going to change. And that is not something that the Prosser School District has any control over, even less than we do with the state. And we are going to have to weather that. Okay, so I want to talk about that. The other thing you need to understand is, when we do a biennium, right now, they did twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven. Right now, we have already been told per se, that the federal government is giving us for twenty-five, twenty-six. We just don't know if we're really gonna get it. So when you hear news going on about the federal government right now, that's for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So if you're hearing that a program's being cut or something, that's not necessarily for the twenty-five, twenty-six unless we don't. So if you're hearing that a program's being cut or something, that's not necessarily for the twenty-five, twenty-six, unless we don't get the federal money that we, or state money we've been promised. It's about us planning for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Anything else on that one about the federal money? Some of our staff reductions with the PSE have gone out. Um, I want everybody to know, it's probably the hardest part of my whole job. To walk up to someone and say, I'm sorry, your position has been cut. It's, we follow the CBA, follow the rules. It doesn't matter who you are, who you're related to, whatever the case may be, that's how it works. But everybody needs to understand, when the PSE negotiated a contract, and they chose to take a raise, that impacted the number of people that were laid off more, it's just a fact. It has nothing to do with belief systems or whatever, that's, that was their choice, and we have to to suffer the consequences thereof. However, if you're one of the employees who have received a letter, and we have more that need to go out. There's a couple things you need to know. In the current contract that ends August thirty-first, there was no timeline, but we had to give you the notice. Deanna and I and our cap, our fur classified, PSE, there was, there's no date in there. We chose to notify in June. So those people could choose to look for employment. Otherwise, we could have waited till the fifteenth of August and said, oh, by the way, next week you don't have a job coming. We didn't do that, I don't work that way. However, we also told them we'd love to have you leave on the sub-list, we'd love you to become a bus driver, there's so many things we need. Also, I, when I specifically looked at each one of them in the eye and and looked at them and said we don't know who's getting married and moving, who's getting divorced and moving, we don't know who's gonna find a better job, go back to college, whatever it may be. And you're put on the list, and it's based on seniority, and you will be called back according to that list, so we're gonna follow all of those. But I want everybody to understand, we still have some food service um, cuts to make and a maintenance and custodian, now those are a little bit different. But you will hear from me personally. I don't pass that on to Deanna, I don't pass that on to anybody else. That is what my signature is for, and you have to know that I'm doing my best. But the community needs to know, when a contract is negotiated, there are implications for that contract negotiation. Um, so that's the bad news. Um, I think the other part is, I'm, I've been meeting with different people, and I've said, we are rightsizing our district. We are only living within our means. Um, Frank and I have kind of joked when we talk, or and Brian, maybe and Jason too, but we joke about farming, I can remember growing up. Some years, we didn't put on new tires on the pickup, and we ate Kraft macaroni and cheese, and some year, everybody in the house got a new vehicle. And we got to paint the house and put it, mom got a new flooring. Well, what I'm telling you right now is, ladies and gentlemen, we are eating Kraft macaroni and cheese, I shouldn't say Kraft. We might even be in store brand macaroni and cheese, and nobody's getting a new car, or always Kraft. Okay, but my point is, we have to do what we have to do to educate our students. And everybody needs to know that, and that means some of the fluff, and Jason, you always remind everybody who's listening, our capital levy money, our capital projects money is capital. We cannot take that money out of capital and pay salaries with it, it doesn't work that way. Um, on to some other things, we have our capital committee meeting, yes, we are meeting on Juneteenth, everybody agreed to, if you're around, that's great. Um, the new tennis courts. I don't know if you know this, but they really aren't finished, the colors aren't right, they're start the spraying on the sixteenth. Um, we are, for those who are listening, some of you are always on there, we are getting the quotes now for the remodel of the, because capital levy, remember? ADA remodeling of the bathrooms, and we're getting the quotes for the concessions and restrooms at the tennis, baseball, softball complex. I don't know where we're at, I don't know what the costs are gonna be, but we're on the next phase. Uh, get many year-end celebrations, boy, did we see a lot of faces and a lot of happiness. Graduation was amazing. Um, uh, we're still planning for August, it's only hard to plan for August when you don't know what the money will be, but we're doing it. We are doing our first review of our special education director applications, it's tomorrow. Um, we interviewed and offered a position for the new, um, accounts payable person. And Abigail Roy will be moving into the fiscal specialist position. Um, there's just some fun things going on, and I'll be off a few days, around a long week in June twenty and twenty-third, and I'll be off a week in July.
Just the twentieth, also, my father-in-law passed away, um, so I will also not be here on the twentieth, but it'll be Kevin's first chance to be in charge. He doesn't know that yet.
Great, thank you. Uh, Kim, any questions for Kim?
Yeah, I just had one question, so let's say on the sale of these properties, when that time comes. And that is that, that's capital money, right?
Yep.
Okay, can that be used for like installing, um, sprinkler systems and things like that to to improve, like to, you know, because we, I heard Andy say we have a shortage of help. And I'm wondering if that would
So
we could use for something like
Irrigation is on the cusp. It's a little tricky. So here's why. If we had no irrigation, we could put it, it would be in, uh, facilities and projects, right? But we already have irrigation, so it's an upkeep. Now, I'm not saying we might not find a way to make it happen, but putting underground is tough, right? Because if we didn't have it, it would be an improved, I mean, a capital project, because we didn't have it, but improving something we have is considered maintenance, doesn't fall into capital. Yeah, so there are, there, I mean, we're, we're working on it, we hear you loud and clear. Um, but we'd, remember that clean audit finding that we were bragging about? We want to keep having clean audit findings.
Thank you. Questions for Kim? Thank you, Kim. Alright, next up is board member reports, Brian.
Um, I thought, uh, as far as graduation ceremony went, I think it went pretty, probably went pretty slick. Um, a little warm, but I didn't think it was too bad, but I think, uh, the staff just did a, did a really good job of setting that up and implementing it, so thank you guys for that. Uh, I want to thank, um, all the people that have served in our districts that are retiring this year, um. Lisa said, we both had Mrs. Bray back in the day, um, Coach Faz has been, uh, just huge for our, our district and community, but, um, thank, thank you guys for all the work that you've done for our district over the years. Um, and then, I mean, honestly, back to this OSPI and Washington State thing, I mean, I time to time encourage people to reach out to their state representatives and voice their opinions, but I mean, if, if they're gonna start withholding cash, then, um, some, something needs to happen on, on a more of a grassroots level, so I, again, students, parents, community members, I, I just encourage you guys to reach out, because this like Delisa said, we, we are not not doing backflips in, in money right now, um, things are tight, and thi- this is just getting ridiculous to not only our school district, but just the entire state, so I, I just urge people to reach out and, and let your voices be heard.
Um, yeah, I would just echo, echo what Brian said in far as giving, uh, the thank yous out to, to everyone who's serving you guys, working very hard, and this is super frustrating with the budget stuff, and, um, just, I just really want to thank you guys for the hard work. Thank you for all the teachers who are retired, and even the ones that served this whole year, it's just, um, I mean, that's what makes it, makes it or breaks it, I mean, this is the whole point we're here to do, is to educate kids. And, uh, and to turn them into, into good citizens, to turn them into good quality people who can come back and serve our community. And, um, it's just, I guess, to see work and the sacrifice that teachers.
I was just reporting what my parent said about the KRV celebration. Um, that it was on time, it was just the right amount of time, it was very organized, so, um, I wanted to, they wanted me to share how happy they were with it, and then I just think um, people don't know that Brian Bailey should be, get a producer award producing graduation, he has got that down and the, and the press box too, it's like, okay, ready, like backstage, ready, what's going on, and it's just so organized, on time. On sixty-minute show, just a great day, and I think everybody really enjoyed it, it just, you know, improved the weather.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Um, yeah, I'd just like to echo graduation, great ceremony. Uh, everybody involved, you know, to put that together, to get every, you know, everything set up, uh, the donation by yellow rose with the flowers and shrubs. You know, just a great ceremony, yeah, it was a little hot, but, uh, um, what's that? Right. Um, but, you know, one thing I noticed was, you know, Anna East, when she read the names, she's very cognizant to keep it flowing. Um, there wasn't a lot of backup, she did a great job, you know, keeping everything running pretty, pretty smooth, so I appreciate that. Um, also wanted to thank all the, everybody that was involved. I heard it was a blast. Uh, the kids had a great time, and, you know, they sticked there till, I don't know, three in the morning, I guess. It was two? Right, so I mean, I, I think it was well put together, you know, for the time and money that the, this community put in, and, uh, you know, the parents and Chapra, whoever was all there corraling all those kids for, till that late, you know, kudos to them, so thank you. Uh, with, uh, no further business, our next meeting will be June twenty-fifth right here at the district boardroom at six PM, this meeting adjourned, thank you. Got in your meeting fast.
Oh, my gosh, well, there was a meeting, and then there was the meeting about the meeting.
Oh, one of those?
Yeah.